Good evening or good afternoon. Welcome to the July 5th meeting of the Glen's Hall City Planning Board. I'm going to start this meeting this evening with some explanation. The city building department is severely understaffed at this point. Letters to the adjoining property owners for all of the items on our agenda this evening were not properly noticed ahead of time. I've been in consultation with the city attorney this afternoon because proper notice was not given to adjoining property owners. We cannot take action on those items that are on our agenda this afternoon. We are allowing the applicants to make sketch plan review, presentations to our board so that we can ask questions and kind of go through the applications. Our next meeting will be August 1st. That would be the meeting that all of those items that are on today's agenda would be voted on. So we will be going through those. We do have three table items from previous meetings that we will be at least asking if there are applicants here for those. If there are, we can act on those. Those have been properly noticed previously and they were tabled by this board at the May and June meetings. So if we get to those and there are people here to represent it, we can go through them. That being said, the first items on our agenda this afternoon is approval, review and approval of the meeting minutes from June 6th meeting. I'll start if it is developed. Any comments or corrections?
No comments.
Is there any?
No comments.
Is there?
No comments.
Is there?
No comment.
I had nothing as well. So I would make a motion that planning board accepts the meeting minutes from the June 6th meeting as submitted. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Down.
Yeah.
The next item on our agenda is old business. These were the table items from previous applications. I'm going to start with Michael Binsmore. Is there anybody here representing that application? I don't see Michael here himself, so I'm thinking that probably may not take place. This was for 240 Warren Street. It's the signage that Michael was looking to do in the windows of the property. I did not hear anything from Michael on whether or not, he said that at the June meeting that he planned to be here for July, but I did not hear anything from him subsequently, so I'm not sure. I think at this point I will further table that application to the August meeting. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Table that until August. Next item on the agenda is Jared Pareka outdoor dining permit at 21 Bay Street for Larella's Restaurant. Is there anyone here representing that application? Again, seeing none here for that. This one was for the outdoor dining. Do we, has anyone been over by there? I went over when the application first came through. I haven't seen whether there's any actual table chairs out there. I haven't watched that.
I just drove by.
Yeah, I know they have their sign and stuff, but I would have thought I'd take it by down there tonight. They might have something. Okay, then I will make a motion to further table the application of Jared Pareka to the August 1st meeting. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The last one is for Robert McCollan. This is a curb cut at 26 Grand Street. This was tabled from several meetings ago. This was tabled due to the lack of survey information and sketches showing where the curb cut was going to be. Is there anyone here representing that application? Again, seeing none. What is the board's feeling on this? I do know that from driving by there several times since this application came before us, that the person that occupies the apartment, that this was being done because they have one curb cut and the building occupants were stacking their cars and they wanted to put one curb cut on either side. All of the sidewalk work and the acre work is done on Grand Street now. And I drive by there fairly often and I know that they are actually using this. They're just using the neighbor's driveway curb cut to get up onto the lawn here to park their cars. I did mention it to the building department because that's, you know, it's not kosher and they're not supposed to be parking there until it gets to this.
Well, this application has been incomplete since it was received April 19th. So you have, you can either table it or you can just deny, make a motion to deny for failing to supply requested information, which was sketches with dimensions, authorization from the property owner and question about property lines.
What's the board's feeling?
We were great. We were very nice. So we just asked people on the survey just to know where the native property was. So they don't feel it's bad. You want to let it show up or kind of?
The board's feeling like we should deny this. At this point, we may reapply with the ability back.
With the papers.
With the correct information. And I would make a motion that the Glen's Hall City Planning Board here, hereby denies the curb cut application for Robert Cullman. As the, not the owner, he is represented as the owner, but he is actually the owner's, the owner's applicant and contractor for the curb cut at 26 Grand Street until we get a, you know, they can reapply with the new information or at this point we're just denying the application as it's been submitted to this board. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay. I think that takes care of all of our old business. As I said, for the people who are coming in late, our, our building department did not make proper notice to the adjoining property owners for all of our items on the agenda for this evening. The six items that are on this agenda will be reviewed by the board if the applicant so wishes to make a presentation to us, but at this point we cannot make a, make any determinations on these applications at this point. So we'll go through the, we'll go through the new business and we'll read that into the record, but if the applicants are here, they can make the, make the presentation to our board and we will treat this as sketch plan review for this meeting. The first item under new business, is there anything I missed?
No.
The first item under new business is site plan review number 230009 for Jordan Kirchner, representing the owner of tax map number 302.20-28-23, commonly known as 21 Elm Street, for seeking site plan review and approval for the modification of the city parking lot, replacement of a semi-permanent tent for outdoor seating and events. Good afternoon.
Hi.
For the record, if you can state your name.
Jordan Kirchner.
And what can you tell us?
So the existing, our existing outside dining permit exists on an, a part of city property that is like a triangle. And we're just expanding that into the parking lot without losing any parking spaces. And I have site plans, which you guys have, that show that. And it just expands our outside dining by like 75%, which is a huge impact for us, but doesn't reduce any parking spots, doesn't change any curb cuts, doesn't change the entrance. Our plans also show the distance to entrance is unchanged, so there's no traffic flow changes. And then we're going to install a tent there, which will be removed seasonally, which will submit to fire inspection, was the only concern that I heard about it. That, that there's no new electrical going in the tent, there's no heaters going in the tent. So it'll just be, you know, we might have to post a fire signature outside, but probably not. So.
Speak something to the fire department.
When we, when it's erected, we'll do a normal fire inspection yet.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application? Anybody online? Anybody online? Then I have to go through our board and have them ask their questions.
Yep.
And we can kind of deal with that from there. I will start with Mr. Banker.
Yeah, you know, looking at, you had said a seasonal application with a tent.
Yes.
Are you, you know, is it two-season, three-season?
It should be three-season. The tent that we've sourced and planned to use has the poly-sides, you know, clear poly-sides. So we should get, not only will it extend our number of tables and seats, but it'll also extend our season for outdoor use.
So there wouldn't be any, you know, in the event there's winter conditions, there shouldn't be any of that situation as far as the tent application goes or the tent rotation?
No. No, and the anchors are permanent. They go into the concrete, but the structure itself will very likely, I'm not 100% sure about this, but very likely will be completely taken down just for wear and tear purposes, seasonally. And no, no permanent heaters, no natural gas heaters or anything.
So the, like the poles, are they a tent by itself in its entirety or are we going in that location for the winter conditions?
That's correct. Yep. But yeah, it should extend our season, you know, a month or two on either side.
Yeah, that's good.
Yep.
Ms. Anderson.
Is there going to be any lighting on the outside of the building under the tent at all?
There's currently lighting above the tent. That's already electrical, just to light the patio at night. But whatever lights are currently wired in might go under the tent. Probably we will need some lighting in there, yes, but it's current electrical already installed.
And then sometimes we have table and chairs suggested in a diagram. I didn't know how many you intended to make table and seats.
So in our current outside dining permit, it is seven. We hope it will, we don't have the full footprint yet for ADA compliance and whatnot, but we will hopefully be able to double that to 14, which will be great.
Thank you.
That's it?
Yep. What's the, what's going to be on the, between the sidewalk and the tent, is it going to be like a fence or something like that? Or no, it'll just be open sidewalk?
Uh, no. So currently we have, well, the sidewalk is unaffected.
Right, right, right.
But currently we do have a, you know, a waist-high fence around.
And that'll stay.
That will be the remaining, when the sides are down, that will remain.
Okay.
So it'll be a tent with a side. It'll be, it has to be delineated for our liquor license. So it has to be delineated, yeah?
Okay.
Has to be enclosed in some way.
Okay. Thank you.
So listen, so you're going to move the curb here.
That's correct. So the dotted line there is the existing.
Correct. It's the existing curb and the solid line is the, well, we propose it's the curb.
That's the interior curb of the parking lot there, not exterior.
Okay. Our attorney answers the questions.
The issue that I see is they currently have an encroachment permit for seven tables.
Yes.
So you're asking to expand on city property even further or have a made an application for a new encroachment permit or outside dining permit?
No, the new outside dining permit would only change after construction. Megan is, is aware of that project and that's what she suggested.
So, but you still have to do your encroachment on that from the city, correct? Because you're, you're looking to vote that in. You got permission from the city to use that triangle property, not affecting the sidewalk. Now you want to expand further into the city park lot.
I think.
So I think before the board can do anything, or if you did something, it would be subject to approval for an additional encroachment. And I'm concerned about removing the city curb. I just don't think that's a habit.
Okay. Ms. Nolan is aware of this project and her instructions to me were get this approved first before an additional encroachment.
So she's suggesting that we, if we get site plan review approved, subject to
Encroachment.
An expansion of your encroachment program.
Yes.
And did you tell her you want to remove our city curb?
Yep, she's absolutely aware. And to not remove the city curb, we're actually going to preserve the city curb and move it out.
You're, you're going to leave the curb where it is now, just fill in and build a new curb?
No, we're going to reuse the existing curb.
Oh.
On the inside of the parking lot.
The granite, the granite that's there is going to get taken out and fill that in so that it's at the elevation that you're currently at.
That's correct.
Those are granite?
No, it's, it's granite.
No, no, the, the walking surface inside on that triangle right now.
No, it's papers.
It's paper. I knew it was.
It's papers.
Something. It wasn't, it wasn't paper.
No, 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 it's papers.
Does that answer your questions?
So it would be subject to expansion of the encroachment permit. I'm still concerned about the urban curb being moved.
Have you gone through any of that with the city engineer at all?
Uh, no, but.
That, that's likely something that they'll want to address because I know that when they redid the drainage for the parking lot, when they put in all that new green infrastructure, they redid all the curbs. I don't know if they did the one.
100% did not redo that.
But I know they did all the pileups and they did all the other portions of it, so I don't.
Uh, and those are concrete, but not on our side of the, of the parking lot, only on the Glen Street side of the parking lot. None of that was changed on our side.
Right, right. Yeah, I know that was all the way it was left, so. Okay. My only other question that hasn't been answered here is, is the tent itself white? Is that the color it is or?
White. Yep.
I wasn't sure. I know that the.
Safety specs and stats.
Today has had several different colors. I just wondered what color it was, it was going to be.
White, yeah.
And I, you know, I agree. I think that what you're trying to do there will certainly be a benefit to your operating.
Absolutely, yeah.
I know every time I'm in there.
Yeah, we're.
There's a waiting lot.
We're hungry for a seating, for sure.
Exactly. And I do think that this will certainly help to expand both in the spring and in the summer and in the fall because if it's covered, like right now, you have seven tables out there. But if it's a night that's where there's a chance of rain, often pretty good there aren't people using those tables.
They go.
You know, so this, I think, this, I think is a better determination. We did have some comments from our architectural consultant. I think most of them have been addressed. He had a question about semi-permanent, what that meant, what time of year, so I think we've done that. Expanding temporary use on city property would require temporary easement change. We did that. Ruining the existing curb that we talked about. He asked a question regarding the rainwater falling from the tent onto the city sidewalk. I think that we've answered that, the fact that you're pulling it back beyond where your existing separation is now, so it's actually still falling.
It's, it's within our existing current patio.
Right, right. So it's not actually falling on the sidewalk, it'll be falling on your patio.
That's correct.
Or, or you're already using. You've addressed the exterior lighting. Is whether there would be something inside the tent, there more than likely will have to be something.
There will have to be something, yeah.
Yep. Physical area, three occupants, tent, that's room with the sidewalk, we addressed that. And provide a layout of table and chair arrangements and that would be part of your final.
Outside dining permit.
Yeah, outside dining permit. So I think we've answered all of Dave's questions as well.
So since we can't act on it and it's going to be paid, maybe you want to talk to the city engineer about that, moving that granite curb for the next meeting?
Great.
Can you do that?
Of course.
And get something from him that says it can be moved and.
Absolutely.
And that he's on board with having that.
Right.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask, if the board had any recommendations to clear up that concern.
I, I think that, did you talk to Jeremy? I think that Jeremy Schindler is the city engineer.
Okay.
He's down to draw for you a plan.
Okay.
But his address is online or you can just call the number from, from the city and get ahold of him. I think talking to him and getting something from him that says, yeah, there's, there's no significant change to this by moving the curb now, far enough for you to get the tent in there.
Okay.
I think that would be, would be appropriate on that. Otherwise, I don't think there's a whole lot else that we can move forward on. We will obviously get notices out to the other, that they're supposed to go out tomorrow.
Okay.
We'll look for that. If there's anything in the meantime that comes up, please reach out to me and we'll go from there.
All right, great. Thank you so much.
Jordan, thank you.
So the next meeting is August 1st.
Yep.
Is that actually taken?
I haven't, I haven't made a motion right now. I have made a motion that Glen's Hall City Planning Board hereby tables the application. 230009 for Jordan Kirchner, representing the, for the address at 21 Elm Street, as presented at the date of 5/7/2023, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Go. Uh, next item on our agenda is site plan and architectural review number 230012 for Alina Holdenquist, representing the owner of tax map number 302.16-17-32, commonly known as 113 Bay Street. Site plan and architectural review and approval for renovations and change of use of the building.
Hello, people.
Good afternoon.
So to summarize our proposed project, the owner would like to renovate the existing build, building at 113 Bay. It's the old, uh, Daxoniers Insurance Building. The major things, as Ethan pointed out, we want a change of use from business to mercantile for a shop on the first floor. We'd like to reconfigure the facade facing on Bay Street and it turns the corner onto Grand Street. And then there's a piece of work in the back parking lot, which will be a new handicap ramp into the building. So, um, I can go into a little bit more detail on what we're proposing for the front. We're gonna, we'd like to remove the existing wood paneling that's on there in the old sign and bring the building back a little bit more to what it maybe would have been when it was first built and that building type. So the owner's proposing a wood-clad storefront with aluminum storefront windows in there. And the presentation that I gave, you sort of gave a color palette. It would be painted wood with black frames. And we want to, we're going to leave the entrance, the existing entrance exactly where it is. We're going to leave the existing entrance to the upstairs apartments exactly where it is as well. The only other work then that we'd be doing on the front of the building is there's a balcony above, which belongs to the upstairs apartments and it has a railing that is below code height. So we're going to put another railing back at 42 inches, painted white, same spindle design. So essentially the same design, just at code compliant height. So then around the corner on Grand Street, the storefront wraps around several feet there. The only other work on that side of the building is we're going to add a downlight at an existing staff entrance, replace the AC compressor. And then around on the back of the building, we're going to make that an accessible entrance to the first floor. So there'll be a ramp to overcome the six-inch height change there. And that's going to be the parking lot for the mercantile use for the store on the first floor.
Okay.
Eric Samson from MASSRA Engineers, we're the civil and structural engineer for the project. There's really not a lot of site work going on here, but we pretty much laid it all out on the plans as far as the thought behind the parking, behind the parking and any of the setback requirements. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this application? Seeing none. We did get some comments from Dan Brown, our architectural consultant. I'll kind of read, read those through to you. The application is submitted in two parts. It's either documents, a site plan and architectural review, although they were probably reviewed in unison. The architectural review portion would be, like traditional, be assigned a separate number and separate procedural action by the board. He's saying that will there be any fencing around the, around the AC unit compressor? Typically, that's not something, typically those aren't, I mean, you're in a kind of a unique situation because you're on a corner.
Right.
Typically, that would be something that would be in the front of a building.
Right, and, and that is one of the fronts of the building. We have, the owner, I'm sure, would have no objection to some sort of little low privacy fence if, if that's, you know, if the board thought that was a good idea.
Yeah, one of the recommendations that he made. The building elevations as viewed from the front, we're. This, around the AC, and provide a small roof to cover the building entry, exit on the south side of the street, adjacent to the street with a gable shape preferred to catch rain and water to either side. Assuming that's the employee, consider talking about where the, where the light.
Oh, on Grand Street?
Yeah.
Um, we can do that. I mean, it's, it's not considered one of the means of egress, but we can absolutely do that.
Right.
Yeah, the means of egress in the back already have clarity and then on the front too. But yeah, that's, I don't think that would be an issue if.
Okay. Those were his only comments. I will start with Mr. Bell. I guess.
What do you want to say?
Expecting to use the store? Yeah. You don't have one yet?
Store. So actually I have a question for the board because it's been office, it's been business all these many years. If the owner isn't able to find a tenant that is mercantile, that's a shop, and they do want to rent to somebody for business, is there another review that they would have to go to? In other words, would it be considered another change of use from your, the board's point of view?
No, I don't think so. I mean, that's really a call for the building department to make.
Right.
And really, the, the difference in code, as you know, between mercantile and business, there's not really a whole lot of change in potency of use there. I think if it was something other than that, if it was manufacturing, whatever that was going in there, that might be something that would, that would trigger an additional review only because it may have, you know, shipping and receiving implications or whatever. But I mean, I think as far as, as those go, and really there's not any change to the physical building or to the site for either of those.
So in mercantile, do you mean retail businesses?
I do mean retail.
Okay.
Excuse me. So you know what? I say that because in the building code, that's how we're supposed to categorize it. So the building department is going to evaluate this based on.
You're the local neighborhood commercial district, right?
Yes.
Okay, so permitted use is a retail business with 2,000 square feet of whole store area or less.
Right.
Convenience stores and restaurants are not permitted.
Which we're not proposing. So it's either going to be, yes, retail, that's probably a better way of describing it, or business offices, that sort of thing.
Okay.
Business offices are allowed, there's.
Offices with 2,000, how many square feet is the first floor?
1,800-ish. Yeah, we're under 2,000. We are at exactly 1,890.
Yeah. Okay. Mr. Bowman, does that address your, anything else?
Yeah.
Ms. Murray?
No, I think it's gonna be a nice, um, revision of the building. It's a beautiful building, I think it's a little really nice.
Ms. Andrew?
Oh, no, I think it's a great look, that, the new look on the front, and then getting back to the, the.
Yeah.
Right.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I, I didn't really have any real questions, um, structurally, how you feel about that, you know, that balcony.
Unfortunately, Ted's been handling it, but I think, I trust him very, very much, and I'm sure it's, it's being looked at critically.
Every time I look at that building, and every time I drive by, I see that, that balcony with the roof on it, paneling right now, six feet over, six or seven feet over the.
I, I've, I've seen, uh, it, it's an okay panel lever, it goes way back.
It goes way back into the building, I'm sure it does.
No, it was really just the railings that were a cause.
I always think that, I say to myself, wow, how comfortable that is.
Maybe that parade doesn't go by.
Exactly.
If they could see fireworks from there, it might be.
There, there are, there are two apartments upstairs?
There are two existing apartments upstairs. I mean, part of the project is a little bit of work, they're gonna redo kitchens and things upstairs, but none of that is gonna impact the outside of the building, with the exception of those railings.
Oh, no? Oh.
No, both, both apartments are accessed from that front.
I know, but the front apartments are the one that has access.
Correct.
Like the balcony?
Yes, it's just one apartment, yeah.
Do you just order about this last time?
Yep, yeah.
Um, I think that's really about all that we can accomplish with it tonight. Um, see, or is it, we see, around this, one of the questions that you've been asking earlier? I'm seeing a board.
I know, I wasn't, I know I need a board, but, um, but I would think that it would be a type-two, as you basically have a reconstruction on the same site, including upgrading buildings to building codes. So I would guess, or I would say, suggest, it's going to be on a type-two build with a ratchet wire. We'll have to deal with that in the next meeting.
Um, so the procedure next time is, we'll come back and we'll give a bit of a summary, and then if there's public care, we'll have pictures.
Yes, I mean, I think that, you know, we'll, we'll treat this at the August meeting very similar to what we did tonight. Um, I don't believe there'll be any modifications, I don't think we had any here tonight that would cause you to have to make any changes other than a couple items, the, the fence, the, can't be removed over that. I think if those items were impressed, then, then we can just kind of breeze through it in the meeting. If there's anything about it in the public table, just sleep.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, can I have a motion to table this?
Was Mr. Brown suggesting two applications?
No. The, the numbering, when they, when they did it, they only issued one number, specifically the site plan review number, and architecture. And they only issued the one, they depended on it. So I don't think that either PJ or Mary were aware that they should give a sub division.
Am I seeing this right?
Yes. Yeah, you're, you're, the site plan, it's, it's, this is the site plan review application.
Yeah, okay.
And architectural review.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Um, would somebody make a table or motion for that?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion that the Glen Falls Planning Board hereby table the project, commonly known as One Thirteen Bay Street, Block Twelve, and eighty-seven. At today's meeting of July fifth, twenty twenty-three.
Be a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Carrie, who's the next? Our next application is for subdivision of Lynn and Corey Hayman. The owner of tax map number three zero two point one-five dash six dash six, commonly known as Thirty-Eight Horicon Avenue, is seeking review and approval of subdivision of the lot. Is there someone here representing that's application, please? For the record, if you could state your name and give us a little rundown of your project.
Yeah, I'm Corey Hayman. Um, I actually came to this board back in October of twenty twenty with an application to divide my lot. Um, and at that point, two of my neighbors protested it, um, on the grounds that it was not, uh, meeting the specifications of, uh, section A zoning. So I withdrew my application, I didn't wanna have, you know, I didn't wanna ruin my relations with my neighbors, and they did have a point. Um, and since then, I've removed the swimming pool. Um, and taking out the pool actually allows for me to actually exceed those requirements. Um, I can make the lot, uh, twelve hundred, I mean, a hundred twenty by a hundred, so that actually gives me twelve thousand square feet. Um, and I actually, um, met with my neighbor, one of the neighbors, Ellen Knapp. I invited her over, and I showed her my plans, and she, it did not have any problems with it. Um, I've also changed a little bit, um, I had an epiphany, instead of selling a lot, I would like to build eventually on it. Um, my kids, there, one's in college, one's in high school, um, so that, I assured her that there would be, you know, quality, you know, craftsmanship, it wouldn't be. Uh, one of the other concerns, and also the neighbor behind me, was that there wouldn't be enough room for a garage. But with the bigger lot, there's plenty of room, and cars could, you know, hopefully come in from the alley, I know a lot of people do that, um, so they wouldn't have to even look at a car. Um, so I addressed those issues, and have submitted again. Um, I was unable to get ahold of my neighbor behind me their way, I think. Um, I tried to contact them over the weekend. Um, but, uh, anyway, I feel like I've addressed the issues that, uh, were last time, and it's a legal-sized lot, and, um, it gives both lots actually quite a bit of extra over the required amount, so, um, I'm hoping you guys will consider that.
You are aware that we can't hack on this.
I know, yes, yeah, yeah.
Um, we will go through it, is there anyone in the public here that would like to speak on this application? See none. Um, we did have, uh, a comment from the, um, architectural, he just reviewed it and said that there were no concerns uh, over what was released last time. Um, I will start with, Mr. Lanier.
Well, it sounds like, uh, you know, how you took the opportunity to remedy, uh, the issue here, I think that was a good solution. I don't think I have any other concerns or.
Ms. Andrew?
Yeah, same thing, it sounds like you've taken care of business.
Thank you.
Agreed.
I agree, yeah, it sounds like, talk to your neighbors and, and double codes. Ms. Jen?
On the map, the shoulder shed.
Yes.
On lot two, is that gonna stay?
Yes, um, yes, I actually use it quite a bit, um, and that, but that's why I drew the line right there, so that the children have the proper setbacks, um, that can be from the line, so, um, everything would actually be.
Ultimately, the only questions that I had, the, the final subdivision plat would have to be done by the surveyor who did the original.
Yes, yep.
Although I'm sure you're aware of that, and I believe Matt Steves was here one other time, talking about this lot. Did, did you do the survey for this?
Um.
Did you use it in Steves?
Yes, yes.
So I think Matt was here talking about it and everything, so, um, that's something that will have to be done. And we just need to have the, um, setback dimension shown from the proposed property line to the existing home.
Okay.
Just make sure that it's not, it's not creating a, a legal setback.
Okay.
It's not, it, it looks like it isn't, but again, we need that on the survey map, showing that, that the setback is, is, is what's required.
Okay.
We can't approve a setback that creates a, a legal violation.
Okay, so should I, uh, get that done before the next meeting?
Yeah, I would say before the next meeting, um, it sounds like this board is in favor of it. We don't have any members who are objected to it, as we did last time, so I think we're in good shape there. And again, I think the biggest hangup that we, that everybody had last time was the pool.
Right.
And, and removing that, I think, is, is alleviates most of those things. So I guess, I would, uh, recommend that you reach out to the surveyor and have him prepare the actual survey subdivision plan.
Okay.
So that when we get it in August, we can prove it at that point, he can submit the, uh, the required milars to the city, and we can stand.
Excellent.
From there.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, yes, can someone make a table or motion for this item?
Uh, I'd like to make a motion that the Glen Falls Planning Board table the project known as Thirty-Eight Horicon Avenue, Glen Falls, New York, section three oh two, block fifteen, lot six dash six, has heard at the meeting of July fifth, twenty twenty-three.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie, cross that, thanks. Um, the next item on our agenda is site plan review. Um, I believe that this is meant to be signed review.
There's a vote.
There is a vote that have been out, yes, you are correct, thank you, um, that have been submitted. It is site plan and sign review, uh, for Eric Uncoff, representing the owner of tax map number three zero three point one-seven dash one-three dash eight, commonly known as Eighteen to Twenty-Six Current Lane, and is seeking site plan and sign review for an art project installing container boxes and applying murals to the sides of those container boxes. Good afternoon.
Back again.
Back again.
Um, yeah, so the container boxes are already there, they've been there for a few months now, or more. Um, and what we're talking about doing is, uh, six murals, two on each of three container boxes, all facing in towards, uh, the Rock Hill parking lot. And each one's done by a different artist, and you've got the copies of the art and the name of the artist.
These are the ones that are labeled on your site plan as one, two, and three?
Yes, correct.
So there are two that are mainly adjacent to Current Lane, in the part of, on the east side of Current Lane, and then the three containers that are on the, on the property line between you and the Mahoney.
Correct.
To the, to the left, correct?
Correct, so this, right, one of those, one of those two containers, the one labeled number three on, on that property one, right, and the other labeled one and two, yep.
And that's, those correspond to the photos in the sky?
Absolutely, yes.
Uh, is there anyone from the public who would wish to speak on this application? Seem none. Um, our architectural consultant, um, who had no, no concerns with what's been presented. Uh, where did I start last time? Start with Art Development.
Uh, my other question is, would, would we ever decide, do, what are, what's happening with the other side?
The other side of them is just, so the side that's facing towards, uh, Mahoney, I'm just gonna paint solid green. There's still a few we've been removing, it was kind of a combination of some of the lettering was painted, and some of it was vinyl, so we've managed to remove all the vinyl lettering. Uh, but one of the containers has some painted letters on it, that used CIS or whatever it is, or used, whatever the, whatever it is. And so we're gonna paint those, you know, get a green to match, and paint those out, so it'll just kind of look like a green fence at that point. Yeah, kind of like a green fence, basically, yeah.
Okay, that's, my only concern, I'd like to thought, see over there on Thursday, about what's going on, just how it looks, you know, from.
Yeah, yeah, no, so, you, the intention is, uh, from the, from the neighboring properties, it's gonna look like a fence.
That's, is there any final question?
I, I don't think so, I, I like it.
Thanks.
I like it, I think it's great.
Thank you.
Set it off.
Okay.
I had, I had a motion, uh, Mr. Allen, you're in?
Um, no, I'm waiting till.
Um, so I think that on that one, you know, um, we've been, this, this board, I think, has been, uh, pretty much in favor of the murals that have been proposed to this point. Um, again, I don't see any real issue with what's being proposed here. Uh, they're, like, not part of the structures.
Right, right.
They're sitting on the ground.
Right.
And this is something that's kind of step one in your long-range plan.
Yep, absolutely.
Um, based on that, obviously, we've made the discussion that we can't really take any action on the meeting.
So I'll see you on the first.
But we'll be back on the first.
This is just for green containers.
Correct. Correct.
So the other two that are there, you're going through, the middle one, through?
Right, so, so the one, if you're facing it from the parking lot, one to the left of that, we don't plan on doing anything with this here. Um, and there's a couple others that are loose that I have behind Glen Falls Produce. I don't plan on doing anything with those as here, other than maybe just painting them a uniform color, like we've gone through and removed the rust and spot primed them, but, you know, we'll, so, there's not gonna be, uh, you know, it's a, it's a function of having the, um, funding to pay the artists to make them into something. So we're doing what we can do at this point, basically.
And the, everything gets applied directly to the container, it's not?
Yes.
It's not like there's a board that's attached to the container?
No, correct.
There actually being.
So that's the canvas, the container's the canvas?
Basically, yes, exactly, yeah.
All right. I think that's about all we can do on the.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Uh, I would make a motion that Glen Falls Planning Board hereby table as the application, uh, twenty-three zero zero one-three, Eric Uncoff, uh, owner, uh, who is commonly known as Eighteen to Twenty-Six Current, is seeking site plan review for the art project for the container boxes at meeting of five July twenty-three. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? The next two items on the application from the agenda this evening are items that I will recuse myself of this, I would be presenting and representable, um, both applicants, please. I've asked Ms. Murray to chair the meeting, and my actions, so I will turn this over to you, continue from there. Just have a little time to talk to you about. Mark Lovak is first.
So next up on the agenda is sketch plan review of, um, One Forty-Seven South Street.
They're, they're both, they're both gonna be sketch plan reviews, only because we can't. You can continue, if you need.
Okay. And we have Ethan Hall here to represent.
You guys can't see, you have copies.
Uh, good evening, for the record, my name is Ethan Hall, I'm the principal with Brusinski Hall Architecture, here tonight representing, um, Nineteen East Notre Dame Street LLC. Uh, the owner of that is Mark Lovak. Um, the project is on the corner of South and Murray Street. It is currently a vacant lot. Uh, to the west of it is a single, it's a multifamily residence, and to the, kind of northwest of it, is the old Adirondack Radiology Building, to give you an idea of where we are. Opposite corner is, um, the post office. Um, the opposite corner going down Murray Street is a single-family apartment, and the opposite corner going towards the hospital is the doctor's office, I can't remember where the doctor's.
The pharmacist.
Is that what it is?
Yeah.
Okay. So, the, what, what Mark has done is, he's looking at, providing, and I gave you, uh, an exterior view uh, that shows a color scheme, the exterior view that I gave you, um, in your handout. Got the copy of that I have. I'm right there. The outside view that I gave you is, is this color, or this, this colored rendering. Um, this colored rendering has a flat roof, I've talked with Mark about that. Um, flat roof in this area just really doesn't work, so we've gone with a pitched roof. Uh, we have laid out the building, it's a six, it's a three-story, six-unit apartment building. Um, two apartments per floor, two on the ground floor, two in the middle, two on the upper floor. Uh, we've provided fourteen parking spaces, two handicap spaces, so we've got more than enough parking, more than enough adequate parking to fit on the lot. We've laid the building out so that there are no area variances required, either height, side yards, uh, any of the variances that might have been required, we've laid it out to stay within all of our setbacks. within all of our setbacks. The idea with the building, for scale purposes, is to utilize a couple of different materials. The ground floor will be a stone material, a stone cladding, it'll be around the exterior of the building. The two upper floors, one will have a horizontal siding and the other will have a vertical siding, so we've got three different types of siding on the building to kind of change the plane of the building. It is kind of a square box, just based on the setbacks, that's really our only option, without going for variances. We were trying to avoid having to go for any variances. Each of the apartment units will have a balcony. The ground floor apartment will be on grade, the two upper ones are setback and recessed into the building slightly so that there's some opportunity to get outside on them. The, the drawing that I have, that I've shown you the elevations for, from Murray Street, this is the main entrance, and second floor actually can leave it out to cover the, to cover the, the entryway so that we don't have water coming down on it. We've utilized hip roofs so that we can have water coming off all sides, not just if it was a flat roof, we either have to internally drain it, which is always a problem, or we'd have to pitch it to one side. If we, if we had done that, it would have all pitched to the back, and we felt that having it come down into eve trenches around the building where there can be landscaping and, and kind of soften the building with ground plantings all the way around the building was, was the way to handle that. A few of the comments that I know Mr. Brown, and I've been back and forth with him over the weekend on, was regarding scaling of the building and things of that nature, so that's how we've addressed those. I did send him the colored rendering over the weekend, and he, he was happier with it once he saw the coloring. One of, one of the other items, or a couple of the other items that he addressed on his letter was exterior lighting, the only exterior lighting that we're planning would be at the building entries, on both front and back. The back entry to the building is more or less for access to get to the basement space if maintenance is being done. Obviously, the tenants would have access points there to be able to get in if they wanted to, but the main idea is to come in the front, the stair tower would be in the front, the elevator would be in the front. It will be a completely sprinkler building, we are planning a full basement for storage and for utilities and mechanicals in the basement. As far as snow storage goes, that was one of the things that Dan brought up. Have that indicated on the back of the lot back here, the idea is with no islands in the lot, it'll be easy to come in on the curb cut and pile the snow straight back into the, into this area and stockpile it there until it gets to a certain point where it can no longer be stockpiled, and then it'll have to be taken off the lot. I believe that addressed most of the comments that Dan had. I know we talked about the stone on the bottom and the, and the plantings that we intend to use around the base of it to kind of soften that. And then at that point, I won't take any of your questions.
Is there any from the public who should speak? You want to start? Would you like to start?
Oh, yeah. I totally agree with not having this. They seem to never go under close of time, so I think that's a great change, you know, the moment we're really had to look at. You know, the three-story, it's tough to work with, you know, trying to soften up a building of that type, but it looks like you guys did a great job at that fact of it, so.
I think the mixing of the different textures between horizontal, vertical, and stone, I think that's gonna break the building up enough so that its scale won't feel as big. Yeah. We did, we did try and go with nine-foot ceilings in all of them, in all of the spaces, just so that all of the apartments would have nice, high ceilings in them.
A loft feel?
Yeah, you know, to try and give that a little bit better feel that way. And, and honestly, I think that there will be, from, at least from the upper floor, there will be some opportunity for views down to the Hudson, at least. So I think you'll be able to see down that far, once you get up there.
Thank you. Ms. Andrews?
No questions. The only thing I was interested in was, is the parking lot gonna be all blacktop? Or is there any additional green space?
Well, the green space is really, the green space requirements have been met for what were required, but we do have, there's grass on all three sides of the building, and there will be grass that runs up the strip between the parking lot and the street. All the trees that are shown on the site plan are existing. Those are all there, and we, we intend to leave, and there is one that we have to take down. Where the existing curb cut is, is just a little too close to South Street for us, so we are gonna have to move that farther up Murray, and it's gonna be right where there's one of the trees. So one of the trees is gonna come out, the rest of them are all there, so we're planning to leave all the mature trees that are on the site.
It's a lovely piece of property.
It is, it's a nice.
Some of the neighbors are, it's gonna uplift the neighborhood.
It's, it is a nice little piece of property, and it's, you know, Murray Street is actually a fairly heavily traveled street, so, but we're right at the light, so, so having it that way. As far as the, the parking lot goes, that will all be internally drained, it won't run off, we'll, we'll internally drain it and bring it into catch basin and drop it and drop that way.
Does that mean, so is there gonna be guard system that's gonna help?
Everything that we're doing, we've got all the way around and on all four sides of the building, we have an eve trench. It'll be landscaped stone and have landscaping in it, so rather than put up gutters on a three-story building, which will be impossible to maintain, we're just want the water, we're gonna kind of increase, yeah, increase the overhang of the roof, let the water come off and get into the ground, and handle it once it gets into the ground.
The, um, the image has the porch on the second and third floor, looks like it's stained out, is that, that's different?
Yes, this, this image that I provided you is really just to kind of give you an idea of the color scheme.
Okay.
That Mark's looking at. Those are kind of the colors, it's a, it's a grayish stone material, the, the vertical will be kind of a wood colored material, and then there'll be a darker band for the horizontal material.
Okay, good, good.
So that's kind of what he's looking at.
Yeah, I'm glad to see that property used, it's been sitting there.
Yeah.
Oh, it looks great. You guys have got a lot, I've got a lot of.
I agree, are the, are the decks, the little balconies, they look like that, too?
They're, they don't protrude from the building, because we couldn't, yes. If they, if they stuck out from the building, we would need to get barrier variances, because we'd deal with the setbacks that are required. So if you look on the floor plan, you can see that each of the apartments has a recessed balcony into it, and the front facade of that balcony will have some kind of a guardrail on it. We're, we're thinking that it'll be some kind of an expanded metal, to give it kind of that more modern look. Those, that picture that you see shows glass, we have found that to be ineffective in this area, because the glass always winds up getting so dirty and scratched and, and affected by all the different things that we have going on here for weather. So we're, we're thinking more of an expanded metal will probably be what the, rather than just traditional vertical pickets or something like that.
And will there be lights out there on the balconies?
There will, there will be recessed lights upon the, on the ceilings, but not on the outside of the building.
I think it's gonna be great.
I like the flat roof, the ladder.
It's just not practical, when, when Mark brought it, when Mark brought it to me, the first thing I said to him, I says, you, you really don't want a flat roof, do you? He said, ah, he goes, once I, once we started talking about it. If, if it were something that we could internally drain, the other thing is that it doesn't show on this, and, and this is how the, the sketch designers put these, it doesn't show the elevator run by. The elevator has to run by the second floor by twelve foot, eight inches, so it's gonna stick up. We, we've actually taken that into account with our, with our exterior, so that I can hide the elevator run by in the roof structure. So this, this gable that's up here hides the elevator run by, so that it's, it's, it's cut into the truss work.
But you don't mechanical up there?
Yeah, for the most part, I mean, we have to take care of that anyway, and if it's a flat roof, that's where all the HVAC wants to go, and then you wind up with having to put access up there, which in our case would mean a stair, which would mean we're actually up to four stories. And having that bolt sticking up off from the top, I just think would be, would be hideous, and there wouldn't be any way to, to hide it. So we, we looked at it and said, I, I think putting a pitched roof on it is, is a better, better look. And it's, I think, all around, it's easier to handle stormwater runoff, it'll be easier to handle maintenance and all those items, so. Agree?
It's very nice.
Great, thank you. As far as seeker on this, my question to you, I've included the senior review.
Sure, yeah, I have classified as unlisted.
As an unlisted, we'll have to go through them.
Sure.
Okay, that's what I thought. Just wanted to double check.
Anything else, or should we go ahead and table it?
Um, we're, we're gonna go ahead and table this one. Obviously, we have to, none of them can be acted on this evening.
Okay.
The next one, we haven't been able to be acted on anyway, I'll hold it at one minute.
Then I'll go ahead and make a motion that Glen's Falls Planning Board table a project known as seventeen South Street at the meeting of July fifth, twenty twenty three. All in favor? Anyone not in favor? Next on the agenda is sketch plan review for Chris Patton, for the project, currently known as three and five West Washington Street.
Good evening, again, for the record, Ethan Hall, Principal of Rosinsky Hall Architecture. Tonight representing Chris Patton and Patton Property Development, excuse me, for what he is calling Washington Manor. This is the two parking lots that are currently, three Washington is a parking lot that's owned by three thirty-three Glen Street, that's been offered up for sale as excess, they don't need the parking anymore, they, they feel that it's not a needed piece for them. And four five West Washington, which was originally part of fifty-five Bay, the building that Peter Hoffman owns on the corner of Bay and Washington. That was, again, it was originally part of that project, and he has found that the parking that he has at his apartment project on that corner is sufficient for what he needs, and, and feels that it's a piece of property that he can let go. So Chris has made contact and been in contract with both property owners to put up twenty-eight apartment units. What we have shown to you, the reason that I say that tonight would have only been sketch plan review for us anyway, based on the layout that we have, we do have to go to the zoning board of appeals on the seventeenth of this month to get a couple of area variances. One, one of the area variances that we're seeking is a front yard setback on the Washington Street side. There are twenty-foot setbacks in this zone, both from Washington and Harlem, so we do need setbacks from the Washington Street side in order to get the apartment on the end. We have set the building back twenty feet from Harlem. Currently, the parking lot extends right to the sidewalk, there are no trees on that side of Harlem Street, there's no grass on that side, it's basically, the lot coverage is, well, permeability on that lot is twelve point seven eight percent. Where in that, in that zone, thirty percent is required, so that lot is already overcovered for, for what's required. The intent here is to take up most of the blacktop and build a building that parallels Harlem Street. The main entries to the building would be on the parking lot side. These are all going to be one-bedroom apartments, both downstairs and upstairs. That building itself will have twenty apartment units in it. The other building parallels Washington. We do need an area variance for this, just based on the depth of the lot and the building that we're putting on there. The front yard setback is twenty feet, we can only get nineteen to get the building in, and it's sixteen feet to the actual entry bump outs, so we've got a couple of area variances that we need there. The color scheme that I showed you, this, these, again, are just two-story buildings. We looked at the surrounding neighborhood, looked at the buildings that are there, there's not a lot of taller buildings, other than the one that Chris has already done on Union Street, which is three stories, and of course, the school, which is three plus stories. But otherwise, they're pretty much two-story buildings, so we didn't want to come in and put a taller building there, reduce the footprint, put something up that was gonna be taller and really wasn't gonna fit and be, be in character. So we've, we've brought it down to two stories. The pictures that I've shown you, the, the eleven by seventeen pictures that I've shown you that are interiors, these are the actual pictures from the Union Street project. His certificate of occupancy for that project has been issued. There were, I think there were twelve, fourteen apartments, I can't remember how many were in there. The first floor units are all one-bedroom studio apartments, and the upper floors, second and third floors are townhouse units. But the pictures that I've shown you are how those are finished. His intent is to finish these identical to those. The, the actual first floor layout for this property is the first floor layout that we used on Union Street. He received his certificates of occupancy on Friday, June thirtieth. As of this morning, the building was full. So there is a definite need, and he has a waiting list of people who are waiting to get in. When he originally put it together, he was concerned that, you know, putting, his, his exact words to me were, what am I thinking, putting in one-bedroom apartments, nobody's going to rent them? By, he, he posted them on Thursday afternoon, by Friday morning, he had enough applicants to fill all of the one-bedroom units. So there is, he has proven there is a need. The idea with these is to, again, there'll be a stone base around the bottom of the building, it'll be a versata-type stone, horizontal siding with some vertical accents. The lighter brown that I show on the, on the rendering is the horizontal, and the vertical will be the darker brown. The gables that I show facing Harlem and facing the parking lot structure and, and Washington Street will have a, a shake material in them, it'll be a contrasting color, so it kind of, again, breaks up the scale of the building, which was one of Dan's comments to me, to the board, actually, over the weekend. So I did talk to him about that. And I think that by breaking it up in scale, we've, we've kind of brought it down so that, yes, it is a long linear building, but by using different materials and trying to break it up with roof lines and things like that, we've been able to accomplish a way to bring it back into scale and hopefully make it feel more in tune with the neighborhood. As I said before, there are currently no plantings on the Harlem side of, side of the street, there are also no plantings along Washington Street, with the exception of the one big tree that's down in the corner of, of Washington and Bay Street. There is a cedar hedge roof, it's the separation between them and Temple Bethel, so that's, that's on their property, so we're not doing anything with that, that big cedar hedge line that's there will stay. The big tree that's on the corner stays just like it is, and that whole area remains grass. By doing what we've done and taking up the, the blacktop and, and adding some permeability to the site, we've actually brought the site into compliance. Thirty percent permeability is what's required, by doing what we've done and adding this, this big grass strip between Harlem Street and the building, which will actually be the backyards of those apartments, we've been able to get grass in there and get that to be a permeable structure, so we've brought that back into permeability, so that's one variance that we didn't have to get, but we still do need the area variances, so those would be the items that we would need there.
How many parking spaces are on this site? How many, is it twenty-eight?
I got thirteen.
Thirteen and twenty?
Twenty, twenty, no, thirty, thirty-eight.
Or thirty?
Yeah, thirty-eight, and I actually have shown six accessible parking spaces, I don't need that many, I actually only need three. I've shown six just because all of the downstairs apartments are accessible apartments, they're all handicap accessible, so we've shown additional, more than what we need. I'm actually one parking space short of what is required, based on total number of apartments, it's one and a half times twenty-eight.
Is one and a half per unit, you have 28 units?
Mm-hmm.
So 42.
Forty-two, and I'm showing 30, oh, okay, so I got four short, that's right, because we had, we added the extra two. If you actually, if you take away two of the accessible parking spaces which aren't required and the loading zone, then I'm short one. I knew I was one short. But we, we added these back here, uh, just because, again, all of the ground floor apartments are accessible, so, you know, we don't know if there will be that need, but we figured it was better to add in and ask for a couple of, uh, variances. It's not really a variance from, that's a variance from this board for parking. Um, snow storage, the way Chris is looking at it, this, this entire lot plows to the back. Um, there is some area back here for snow stacking. Mostly, mostly what he thinks is it'll be plowed during the storm. Once the storm is over, he'll be in and remove it, on a, on a storm-by-storm basis, because it just, there's not going to be enough room to do it. Um, there is a current easement to the Wake House. Um, part of their driveway is on this, on the property at three Western, um, or West Washington. The intent is to leave that, not ask them to move their, you know, to take away their easement or do anything, so we've, we've set the building so that that will leave that easement for them and leave that driveway space for them. Um, there is a curb cut onto Wade Street, apparently at one point prior to CNA taking the building, um, and, and Travelers taking the building. Continental, when they were in there, actually had a drive, so that you could come in off of Washington and go out on the Wade Street. Um, that's, that's actually been blocked off. The curb cut is still there, but the fence runs all the way around the property, and it's our intent to leave the fence. We, Chris didn't want to have people going in and out that-
The only access will be from Washington.
The only access will be from Washington Street, yes. Yep. Um, with that, I'll take your questions.
Any comments from the public?
I guess I have a class of impermeable, these kinds of plans, we, uh, take into consideration sidewalks.
Do you want to come here first?
Yeah, yes. You're referring to the condition of the sidewalk?
Yeah, the condition of the sidewalks, and if, uh, the sidewalks could be upgraded, uh, we, the city, I'm Ben Lappam, fourth ward, uh, councilman, and the city passed complete streets policy in March, uh, which, uh, recommends that the planning board look at, uh, sidewalks during, uh, the, during the time that there's a review going on. I haven't heard any of that, but it may be that it's all been addressed to, uh, I just was bringing that up as a question.
The sidewalks currently exist on Washington Street-
And Harlem.
And Harlem.
Yeah, there are sidewalks on both. Um, we'll take a look at the condition of them. Obviously, when we're running-
I can tell you on Washington- I tell you on Washington, from where all of those, uh, one-way street signs were, they're cut by DPW and then patched over, and they're all very iffy. If you were on, if you had, uh, accessibility issues, you would have problems with those spots. That's all the way up and down both sides of Washington, as a for instance.
And are there handicap ramps from Washington?
At the, at the crosswalks here-
They're not ADA compliant, yes.
They're not ADA-
The current ones, yeah.
Are not?
Not. No, there's a drop-off.
Okay.
And it doesn't have, yet, on Washington?
This one? I thought this one was, I thought we looked at that one. The one that comes from the corner of Harlem and Washington, and there's a crosswalk that goes across the-
I, I believe that it's not ADA compliant.
We'll take a look.
Okay.
Yep.
So the applicant would make a recommendation that he would make sure that the sidewalks are ADA compliant and the ramps from the sidewalks to street level?
Yeah, and there, again, there is, on, on Harlem Street, there isn't another curb cut that was back here originally. That will get that taken care of, get that taken out. And there's, there's no, there's, there's, there's a concrete apron there still, and there's a curb cut, but there's no way to get in, because the fence runs all the way across. So we'll wind up taking care of that and fixing that as well. Um, but yeah, I, I understand Ben's issue with it, is when you're running in and out with construction equipment and that kind of stuff, it does tend to, you know, add a little bit to it, so yeah, any, anything that needs to be updated, we can get that taken care of.
And the land that he's acquiring from Peter Hoffman, that's going to stay all green space?
Yep. Yeah, this, this whole corner will stay all green.
And all green already?
Right, well, yeah, it's, it's green, it's green and over, yes.
I almost went over there by law.
Yeah, it's only, it's only about this deep right now. I think they were practicing no momey through June and-
That's what a bad day for the city.
In that corner, yeah.
No, everything, like, you walk around, and people just got used to not to, starting not, starting to take care of your properties.
Completely. Completely.
Well, it has to be green.
The leaves are the smallest, and there's no leaves on them.
Right.
Properties like that all over the city.
Yeah, unfortunately, property maintenance enforcement right now is, they're, they've already got-
They have other issues.
They've already got, yes, as we've noticed by our meeting tonight.
All right, Mr. Lamper?
I totally agree with you. It looks great, it's going to be a good addition for the city. Um, I was hoping that it would more, um, decided based Washington and Harlem Street would kind of look more like individual buildings instead of one big, we've done a lot to break up the building and, you know, take away that scale of it as a furnace, but it would look cool, you know, maybe down the road, and I know there's a cost in there.
Yeah.
But it would look a lot cooler, it almost looked like brown silver, it, it just looked at that scale of the apartment.
We talked, we talked about that, and the, and the reasoning for us not actually going forward with that is that's the back of the building. And-
But that's what we all see.
I know. And, and Chris's fear was that if he did something like that, it would encourage people to go to that side of the building to try and get into the building, even though there's no sidewalks and no entries there. Um, and, and we are putting a, a three-foot, um, decorative fence along between the sidewalk and the backyards, um, so that there's something to break that up, to prevent people from, I, you know, he, he wanted to put a big fence. I said, "You can't put a big fence in the front yard, we can put a three-foot fence in your front yard," that's it. Um, it's, it's like locks, locks deter the innocent. You know, we put a three-foot fence up, if somebody's intent on walking through there, they're just going to step over the fence, but-
I mean, they do have patio doors on that side.
They, they do have, yes, they're-
But it's not a main entrance.
That's correct. Yep, it's just, it's just for the tenants to be able to get to the backyard. Um, the balconies on the second floor that you see there are Juliet balconies. You open the door, and that's as far as you go. It's not like these protrude out, and it's, it's, you just open it up, and it's very similar to the balconies that are on 55 Bay on the corner there, so they'll have, you know, have the ability to open the door and allow the outside to come in, but they can't actually get to walk out.
Mr. Lamper, are you suggesting that possibly you have different colored siding?
It's just something to break it up, so we don't, because you don't like this, you know, it's all the neighborhood, other than the, like you said, uh, between Goodwin and Harlem, there isn't any of these in the city, really, so to speak, and, you know, we're kind of sitting impressive here.
Um, the only ones that are at all similar to this would be the ones that Larry Cluett did over on, it's that little one-way street that comes out.
Washington?
Why, is it Washington? Yeah. There's, there's three duplexes that are, that are built there.
Yeah, you know, we just, we, there's so much good going on in the city now.
Yeah. Um, let me, let me talk to Chris and see if that's something-
Maybe it would cost more to change the color of the siding, or the gentrations.
Um, possibly not. It, it might. Because he's buying it in quantities. If, if you buy it in quantity, you get a, you get a better price on it, and if you buy different color. Let, let me talk to him and see, maybe we could do, you know, the two-end bum bounce, we could do with a different color, and, you know, or maybe flip the colors.
Yeah, just, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah. Yeah, I'll, I'll talk to him and see what we can do. I mean, we, we know we have to come back anyway.
Ms. Andrews?
Um, my only question was the permeable, and you covered that, and, um, and then the setback question, will you be able to address that?
We have to go, yeah, we have to go on the 17th, and Chris has to go on the 17th.
And then Snowy, will we just push it towards the back, and then you move?
This, yeah, this-
He's the property guy, so he-
Yes, property maintenance, he's got his own staff that goes and does that. Um, the other thing that I just wanted to bring up about, not only this project, but the one that was, that was previous, um, both of these are market rent. Both of these projects are market rent, they're not subsidized housing. Um, they, neither of the applicants is asking for any pilot program or any, uh, tax reduction or anything, so these are, these are full market rent apartments, paying full taxes on the property.
And not, yeah, not getting any from the city, they're coming with their own money-
Correct, coming in with their own money and, and running this in, so.
What is the market rent for a home improvement?
It would shock you. Yeah, uh, somewhere between 1,200 and $1,400 a month.
1,200.
Yep. Yeah.
Some of the little old ones have been increased to 11, and nothing's changed, it's just a little studio, and, you know, suddenly your rent is-
And they're gone. I mean, as soon as, that's, he was like, "If I had 20 more, I could fill them today."
Well, we're losing so much house in the city because of the Airbnb.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I agree.
Mr. Lamper?
Uh, I'm also, I think that it's another good, uh, comment, I think it's, we love the projects, and I think it's, uh, it's a good use of that property as well, and, uh, fix some, some other things that probably have been bugging people with sidewalks, uh, for a while, and I'm going to do that kind of thing, so I think it's a good use.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And the sidewalks haven't been, or the, not the, the parking lots haven't been being used, so it's a nice use of that space.
Yeah, they, they are, but they're not, you know, there, there's nobody, I mean, there's hardly anybody in the tower right now, that place is vacant. We, we did the top two floors, we did the eighth floor and the ninth floor for AngioDynamics. Uh, they signed a 10-year lease, and there's nobody there.
Karen's there.
Karen's there. You don't have a problem finding a partner. Partner at the front door.
The problem is, it's a hole somewhere, someone's got to muscle an idea with that bill.
Yeah. Yeah, no, exactly.
But they can expand that parking lot as well.
Yeah, there's, there's three more floors that can be added to that parking structure.
Why can't they put apartments there, like on the top three floors?
If AngioDynamics wanted to do that, I'm sure they would. I don't know, because, oh, I, well, I don't know. There, there may be something code-wise that we can allow-
For making a loan, has a loan, it's just invested, someone has to do it.
Yes.
Yeah, that's an idea. Um, no, everybody's covered all my questions as well. Karen, do you have any questions?
Again, this will be a tight, uh, unlisted, uh, seeker action, and the application included the seeker applications.
So do we even have to table this, since you have, you have to go through?
Uh, this is sketch plan review, I knew that we weren't going to have anything done tonight, so I don't think there's any reason to table it, um, it's just, it was just sketch plan review. Good. Thank you very much, I appreciate your comments.
So you're submitting a new act, a new-
The application won't change, um, unless anything changes from the zoning board on the 17th, which we're not anticipating any change from that, but that's a completely different board, and we never know what's going to happen. Okay. Thank you for doing this, appreciate it. Um, is there anything else that anyone has for the common good of the board? If not, then we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Um, anybody opposed to that motion? Then we will see you in August. Thank you very much.